Okay, we're ready to start our meeting if we can all rise, pledge to the flag first.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome everybody that's here today, and I forgot to get a signal from our screamer again to get ready. He needs a red hat like they use at the football games. I want some red. Okay, Jeff had just mentioned, but I will say again that if anyone wishes to speak in the hearing on the wheel tax, we'd like to get your name and address on the record sheets back here at the table. First item of business today is approval of the minutes from the July 2nd meeting.
It was approved what?
Second.
The mood is seconded. Do we approve the minutes of the July 2nd meeting? All those in favor or aye?
Aye.
And opposed? Okay. The first item of business for today is the wheel tax hearing. Before we get into the open discussion of that, I have several remarks I would like to make leading up to this discussion. We're here today to discuss the possibility of enacting a wheel tax for Wayne County. This is a user type tax or fee that would be used to help support, maintain, reconstruct, and so forth our roads and bridges.
It's hard to hear. I'm having to check the sound system now.
Sorry, I thought it was probably working.
No, it's not working, so.
Talk louder, Max.
Yeah. Wheel tax is taxes paid from two different categories. One's a cert tax on the excise tax you currently pay when you buy or obtain or renew your license plates. The second part of that is a wheel tax. The wheel tax is for large trucks, large trailers, RVs, and so forth. The cert tax is on cars, vans, small trucks like pickups, small trucks under 11,000 pound license, small trailers, and so forth. The wheel tax has been proposed multiple times in Wayne County, but has never been enacted. There's currently 55 counties in the state of Indiana that have a wheel tax, but due to changes the state recently made in funding, several counties and municipalities are considering the implementation of a wheel tax. I want to commend our highway department and our bridge department for the work they've done over the decades of time to maintain our roads and bridges. But unfortunately, over the past several years, costs have been rising rapidly. Revenue has not nearly matched that, and we're now at a point that we need to make some changes. The changes in road funding by the legislature has changed.
Can you speak up so we can hear you?
You might have to move closer since the microphones are not working.
Steve, is somebody working on that? Sorry, but if you want to move up closer. So I want to be clear about one thing this morning. There's no one at this table this morning, none of your council members, that really want to implement a wheel tax at all, but we've been forced to do this by actions of the state and the changes in the funding environment. So this is not something that we have taken lightly or that we are wanting to do for the sake of enacting a tax. It's because of the need for money for road and bridges, not only in the county as the unincorporated areas, but all the towns and cities within Wayne County. So I want to give a little background information as we go into this. Brandon Sanders, our county engineer, will be giving you some additional information about the wheel tax, but also information about the bridges, the situation we're in, the need for additional revenue to maintain these bridges and replace the ones that needed. Mike Sharp, who's superintendent of the highway department, will be doing the same thing from the road perspective, talking about the history of the funding, the expenses, and the needs that we have. For many years, the state of Indiana has had alternative options available for funding by local government. Not all by any means have implemented those, and Wayne County is one of those. We have not implemented in recent years any of the local income taxes that they've had available, nor have we implemented the wheel tax. However, with the changes that the state has made, we're at a point now that we need to look at these things. And also, the state has been very clear that until local government utilizes the funding tools that's been made available to them, they really do not intend to make major changes in funding available for local government. So that brings us up today. One additional thing then that's changed dramatically in this funding was the community crossings program. That was funds that for several years has been available to all cities, towns, and counties on a competitive basis to apply and receive funds for road maintenance, bridge maintenance, and so forth. Those funds required a match. In the case of our size county, that was a 50% match. But there's been a lot of money brought into Wayne County over the past few years from the community crossings fund. However, the state now has changed that fund into basically three pots of money that somewhat affect us. The first is continuation of the competitive portion to receive funds by cities or counties. But that total amount has been reduced significantly. For the entire state, that is down now to $100 million that would be available next year for that. There's a second fund that they created strictly to help Indianapolis out. They can receive an additional $50 million if they provide $50 million of new match money to go with that. The third pool of money is what we are concerned about and interested in, and that is community crossings money that will be awarded based upon lane miles. Lane miles are actually how many lanes. In the case of the county, all of our roads are two-lane, so that means that for every mile of roadway, we have two lane miles. This is good for county government because in almost all cases, the counties in the state have far more lane miles than cities, even though some cities have wider streets that three, four, five lane traffic. But still, the counties are going to come out ahead. So with these funds being distributed on a non-competitive basis, in other words, the money that's in that fund, which in '20, up to '27, will total around $2 million, give or take, that will be distributed automatically to towns and counties that meet the qualifications. One of the most important qualifications to get that pot of money is to have a wheel tax. If you do not have a wheel tax in place, regardless of the amount, you do not get those funds. All those funds will be distributed only to the entities that have the wheel tax. So if we do not qualify to get that large sum of money, which in up through to '27 could amount, depending on the number of lane miles in the state to qualify, that could mean $1.5 million to $2 million for Wayne County's roads and bridges. Remember, the main qualification that affects that distribution is to have a wheel tax. So that's what has led us today to have this discussion about the wheel tax. So I want to also point out that the implementation of wheel tax by Wayne County does not just create funds for Wayne County. Every city and town in Wayne County would receive a portion of those funds. Wayne County, for Wayne County jurisdiction, roads and bridges would receive about 48% of the money raised. The city of Richmond would receive around 40% of that money. The remainder would be divided up to all of the towns within the county. I want to also say that a wheel tax is something that is collected only once a year. It's collected at the time you either obtain or renew your license plates at the Bureau of Motor Vehicles. So it is only a one-time-a-year expense that's added on to the registration fee that you pay, and you're currently paying a excise tax when you do get your license plates purchased or renewed. This would just add a little bit more to that. So we have quite a bit of information here. The first slide that Brandon will bring up talks a little... Is the mic working yet?
No. Is it on? Are you trying to turn it off?
No. Steve's trying to get it going. There they are. So this talks about the excise cert tax, the vehicles that qualify for that, which are cars, vans, smaller trucks, so forth, trailers. The right side of that is the ranges of rates that can be implemented on those vehicles. The next slide is about the wheel tax. Wheel tax applies to semis, large trucks, light RVs, that type of vehicle. Also, there's the rates. Both of those charts had the rates that counties can implement, the range, and the range of rates that counties can implement. Counties and the towns are separate. So towns can implement a wheel tax if their population is over 5,000 people, but their rates are different that they can implement from the counties. Another point to bring forth is that if a county has a wheel tax and a city within that county implements a wheel tax, then the residents of that city would be paying both. The residents of the county would only be paying the county tax. But remember that those who pay the county tax, that money is distributed to the county and to all of the towns and cities within the county. And in the case of Wayne County, the majority of the money, slightly a majority, would go to the cities and towns. So I'd like to introduce Brandon Saunders, who is an engineer, who's going to talk a little more about the details of the wheel tax, which is made up of the excise cert tax and the wheel tax on the larger vehicles. Also, he'll talk a little bit about our bridge fund, our situation of bridges, and the money that we need. Another point that I want to make sure is clear on, and often people talk about their property taxes they pay going to the roads and all of that. Counties are not allowed to use property tax dollars on the roads. Cities can, counties cannot. However, our bridge fund, which is a CUM fund that has a levy in the property taxes, does get money via a levy in the property tax. The bridges basically are funded, the work and the maintenance, from that, but all projects of any major size receive matching funds from the feds and the state, which in most cases is supposed to be 80%. We have currently major issues in the fact that those 80% were based, awarded for a project were based on the estimated construction cost at the time of the application for that, which usually is a five-plus or minus five-year period from the time you apply for those and you're actually starting to build a bridge. Over the last five years, we all know what inflation has done to everything we deal with, but it has hit the construction industry, bridges, roads, and many things significantly. Brandon's going to talk about that. Mike's going to talk about the impact of the inflation. But currently, we have projects up for bid that will not have near the 80%, and we're struggling to find the additional money to meet the match to get that 80%. Highway funds that are used for maintaining the roads are coming mainly from gas taxes that you pay that goes through the state. They send us out additional. Then there's also for larger projects, state and federal funds that can be obtained. And then as well, in the past few years, the community crossings program that I referenced, those funds have been used for road maintenance and building. So Brandon, if you could talk a little about the wheel tax a little more and then also this bridge situation.
Thank you, Max.
So if the mic's not working, it might be well if you were more faced the other way, if you could.
Okay. I just want to give everybody just a quick review of House Bill 1461 as it pertains to the roads and bridges. This legislation has changed the community crossings matching grant that we have used in the past, starting back in 2016 through 2025. This table right here shows you the total state award for the community crossings grant. That is the grant that we applied for, for awarded. We pay 50% of the construction cost for our projects. And we can use that money on rotting and sealing, bridge redevelopment and replacements, concrete over repairs and replacements. Since 2016, Wayne County has received over $4.2 million through the community crossings. So the community crossings matching grant has been vital to fixing our infrastructure here locally to provide the best roads and bridges moving forward. So House Bill 1461, this legislation modifies the community crossings program in multiple ways. As Max stated earlier, it reduces the matching grant from between $250 to $300 million in years past, down to $100 million. It transfers $14.5 million back to the state's general fund. It also earmarks the $20 million for the railroad crossing remediation projects. And it also earmarks up to the $50 million for Indianapolis if they find another $50 million of additional new match money. The rest of that pot of community crossings funds will go into a direct distribution based on the lane miles. So on this chart here, you can see fiscal year 2026, the available distribution for the entire fund is $248 million. Then you take out the $100 million for the matching grants, the general fund reimbursement, and the railroad remediation projects. Looking at the fiscal year 2027, you will see at the very bottom, that will leave about $190 million to $254 million for the total lane mile distribution back to the local governments. This is something that we do not have to apply for. It is just directly given to us. The only caveat is we have to enact a wheel tax to get it. So currently, in 2025, we've got 55 counties that have already adopted the wheel tax. Just specifically the counties around us, you can see Fayette and Union adopted one back in 1998. Henry and Randolph, 2024 and 2026. So they've had theirs for a long time. Wayne County has not had one, but currently looking at adopting one very soon. So looking at the community crossings lane mile distribution, this is a conservative value if every county in the state adopts a wheel tax. You can see down here at the bottom, the Wayne County's estimated distribution on the low end would be $1.5 million, the high end about $2 million. Again, that's a conservative number based on every state and every municipality adopting the wheel tax that is eligible to do so. You can see that this distribution would not occur until June of '27, which is the end of the fiscal year '27 for the state. For fiscal years '28 and '29, that pot of money does reduce, so we will get less moving forward. The first initial pot, because the state works on a fiscal year which is July to June, the counties work on a calendar year. So that's why this first pot of money is a little bit larger based on the differences in fiscal year and calendar year. So this chart right here just shows the estimated revenue from the wheel tax that could be generated. We have the percentage breakdown for Wayne County and all the towns and cities within the county. The next column is going off the minimum rates. You can see the county would receive $233,000. The max rate of $1.6 million. And for the excise cert tax, there's also a minimum rate percentage base. It's a modified rate that you could enact with the excise cert tax. And you can see the minimum rate with a 2%. The county's portion would be $244,000. So that just kind of gives you a range of what can be generated based on the min and max rates that could be set. This chart kind of shows you a breakdown of what that modification, the modified minimum rate, 2%, would look like. For the excise cert tax, the passenger cars, light trucks are broken down into classifications and the year of the vehicle. So as you can see, with a minimum rate of $7.50, with a 2% of the excise tax that's charged, the majority of the classes would be paying that $7.50 with the newer cars, higher value cars paying up to $21 per vehicle. Now I'd like to turn it over to Mike Sharp to talk about our revenue.
Thank you. So coming up, I have a table containing various costs between the 2024 and compared to 1995, so about a 30-year span through that. Table breaks down the costs of materials, equipment, treatment types for each year. The columns labeled percent increases highlights individual cost increases for the same materials and treatments that we used back in '95 compared to today. These percentages emphasize the cost of these items has increased more than the revenue has been brought in. Overall, in 2024, the cost as they relate to the amount of road maintenance coverage has declined over the years and has not gone as far as it did in 1995. To keep up with these increased costs, additional funding from the wheel tax is needed. This additional revenue will allow the highway to continue to maintain the paving and sealing needs moving forward. So just looking at some of the costs, in 1995, for a tandem dump truck, brand-new cost was low over $51,000. The one we just bought in '24 was a little over $151,000. So we're 196% increase in our cost of dump trucks. The grade all, I've used the price of $232,000. When I first became supervisor in 2004, we bought a brand-new grade all, and that's what that cost was in 2004. Where compared to, we just bought another grade all. We want to use one though for $315,000. But a brand-new one, looking at that cost, is $615,000 if you were to buy a brand-new one. That's why we try to go to be used, buy and use equipment. But that's 165% increase in cost. To pay one mile of roadway, now this is looking at an 18-foot wide road, going one mile, low over $17,000 in '95 compared to $50,000 in today's cost. And I want to say back in '95, we did 23.25 miles of mainline paving and then 159 miles of patch paving. So patch paving is where we just kind of pick out bad spots in the roadways and try to just pave those areas to keep them going through. Today's cost is $58,000 a mile. And in '24, we did 3.7 miles of mainline paving, but I want to say that came from the community crossings. We applied for community crossings. We got matching funds. So half of that money comes from the community crossings. The other half came from jail bond money. That was put aside for the highway department. So that was our matching money. It's what we use for that. It didn't come out of the actual highway budget. But that's a 241% increase. Single sealing, almost $4,000 a single seal, a mile of roadway in '95. And we all, in '95, we did low over 51 miles of single sealing. In '24, that cost is $16,794. We did 15 miles, but that also was through a community crossings project. So half the money came from the jail bond money. The other half came from community crossings money. So 325% increase in cost there. Strip sealing, so that's something that we do where we patch instead of sealing the whole roadway, we do patches of putting tar down and putting gravel on top of that, trying to get the bad spots, carry our money forward. Wayne did 11 and a half miles back in '95 at $61.94 a mile. Last year, we did 556 miles of roadway is what we covered, which cost $601.21 a mile, so an 871% increase. Now I'll say that depends on the winters that we have. The worst winters we have, that number can go up. I've seen that in recent years, up to about $1,100 a mile to $600 a mile. It just kind of varies, depends on what the cracks are in the roadway and how we got to cover them. But we did less in '95 because we were doing more paving and sealing, so we were able to cover the road. So we'll be able to do, that number will be able to come down if we were able to pave and seal more. We wouldn't have just much of the patch sealing. Hot mix per ton, $19.53 compared to $73.50 today, 276% increase. The ice sand that we use, but down in the wintertime, $2.85 versus $8.76, 205% increase. The cold mix that we patch the cold spots with, the bowels and so forth, went from $30.75 up to $150, 388% increase. The liquid emulsion, which that's what we use for our sealing, went from $0.54 a gallon to $2.63 a gallon. 53 stone, which is what we use a lot in the gravel on the sides and putting pipes and so forth, went from $5.10 to $14.50, 184% increase. Eleven gravel, which we use for our sealing, went from $5.50 to $14.95, which is 172% increase. And then the salt was $30.54 compared to $78.11 is what last year's price was. I just got the bid in from the state, so this coming winter, that price is going up to $93.58. So we have 156% increase from last year. Number of employees. So in '95, we had 42 employees. Currently, today, we've got 32 employees. And I want to say, I really think our employees do a great job. We're down 10 employees. We're still covering the same mile miles. They're getting the work done. They're working very hard to do it. They do a great job at that, but we're doing it with lots of employees, so we're about 24% down on our employees trying to cover the same amount of roadway. Then if you want to look at our revenue, our revenue has increased. So from '95, if you add up the MPH from local road and street, is where our biggest amount of money comes from. We did get some money from county general. County general went down from what they used to. I think it come from Cadiz where it comes from. But our increase in our revenue has gone up 62%. But if you look back over in the other column where our increases have gone up, you know, when you're looking at well over 100%, 200%, 300% increases, but we only increased our revenue 62%, that's why we're not keeping up with the times. Okay. So I'll keep moving, but so the overall funding... So I'll keep moving, but so the overall funding compared to what we need. So if we wanted to do what we did today with today's prices, doing the work that we did back in nineteen ninety-five, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars is what would be needed. That would cover your coal mix, ice sand, nonseal, stone, salt, things like that. And then strip sealing, right now, I would say two hundred thousand. That number would probably decrease down over the years as more paving and sealing we were able to do. Patch paving, we would still do about one point five million dollars in patch paving. And then if we paved twenty miles of roadway, you'd be looking at about one point two million. Single sealing about fifty miles, it'd be about a million dollars. So in today's cost to do what we did in ninety-five, we would need four million, ninety thousand dollars. The road funding in our budget is one million, five hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. So we've got a shortfall of two million, five hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars is where our shortfall is for the highway to do what we did thirty years ago. I'll turn it back over to Brandon for the bridge part.
Okay.
We're gonna, I'll have a table that contains various projects ranging from two thousand and six to twenty twenty-five. This table breaks down the cost of preliminary engineering, roadway, acquisition costs. So that's the table that Mike was talking about earlier about the shortfall. If we did the work that we did in nineteen ninety-five, if we did that today with today's dollars, the shortfall that we're seeing in his budget is the two point five million dollars.
Okay. So the table that I'd like to show you is the breakdown of costs for preliminary engineering, roadway acquisitions, construction costs and construction inspection compared to the square footage of each bridge. So for a federal aid bridge project, the construction costs have increased about four to five times over the last eight to nine years due to inflation. For a local project, which, which is not a federal project, it's something done with local funding, no federal dollars, those costs have increased about two to three times. So the main, main source of the bridge fund revenue is from property taxes. And I will show you my slides that over the past ten years, our revenue stream has been about the same. So this is the need for additional revenue through the wheel tax to help continue to rehabilitate and replace our bridges as we move forward. Okay. So here we go. Back in two thousand, just a couple of the bridges we did in two thousand and six. I've got different widths and lengths of the bridge to kind of give you comparison on a bigger bridge at a hundred and eighty-six foot long, two hundred and twenty-three foot long, and also a smaller bridge here showing at a length of twenty-one feet. So main takeaway is the last column, the construction cost per foot. Back in two thousand and six was anywhere from a hundred and twenty-two dollars to a hundred and thirty-eight dollars a square foot. Trying to compare that to the two thousand and eighteen project and twenty twenty-five projects was similar widths and lengths. Those costs have increased to six hundred and twenty-four dollars a square foot and down to fifteen, or five hundred and twelve dollars a square foot. So on average, you're looking at a increase in cost of almost three hundred and fifteen percent. These are, these are six federal aid projects. Again, we get eighty percent match from federal highway, which is administered through NDOT. But over the past five years, like Matt said earlier, cradle of grave, these projects start at application time, they're not built till four or five years later. So the past four or five years, we've seen that massive inflation. NDOT has not been able to match the eighty percent that was originally applied for. So that's, that's kind of the funding shortfall that we're seeing currently right now. Moving forward, that should level back out hopefully, but we never know what the future is going to hold. So just a recap of Wayne County. Here in Wayne County, we maintain two hundred and thirty bridges. We're ranked the top six in the state for the most number of bridges. Currently, we've got fourteen that have a poor rating, whether that's the wearing surface, the deck, the superstructure, which is your steel structure, steel beams or concrete beams, and the substructure, which is your foundation, abutments and whatnot. Do you want to point out that just because it has a poor rating does not mean it's unsafe to cross? It just means that there might be a specific area that we need to look at a little bit closer. Maybe it's a maintenance item, maybe it's a rehabilitate item. So just because it's poorly rated does not mean that it's unsafe to travel across. So a typical lifespan of a bridge is seventy-five years. So if you do the math, we need to replace three bridges a year to save within that life cycle span of a bridge. So in theory, if you do one federal aid project for the bigger bridges and two local projects for the smaller bridges, I show some numbers for you. Federal aid projects cost about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That would be our twenty percent match for preliminary engineering, roadway, construction and inspection inspection. Local projects, we do the construction inspection in-house. So if you did two local projects, it's about one point nine million. That's construction cost and design cost. We also try to do at least one small structure replacement, which is a concrete box structure, a little bit bigger than just your, your metal culvert pipe from the ground. And then there's some, some maintenance, you know, deck sealing, patching, a concrete overlay, stuff like that, that we also do to preserve our bridges to make them last a little bit longer, about four hundred thousand a year. So total cost in today's world is about two point eight million dollars to do three bridges, a small structure, and maintain the bridges adequately. For this year, the twenty twenty-five budget, we've only got about seven hundred and fifty thousand in our budget to do these projects. So it's showing an annual shortfall of about two million dollars for us to keep up. Just a quick summary when it pops up there. The highway budgetary shortfall is about two point five million. The bridge budget shortfall is two million. So a total of about four point six million between the roads and the bridges. So back from the earlier slides, the minimum wheel tax, you would generate about two hundred and thirty-three thousand. At the max rate is one point six million. The lane mile distribution from that, that third pot of community crossings money would be one point five million. So the revenue shortage, we would still have a revenue shortage with the wheel tax and the lane mile distribution on the, if we went with the minimum rates, about two point nine million. And if we went with the max rates, one point five million. So as you can see, whether we enact a small rate or a high rate, the roads and bridges are still impacted, we're still struggling to keep up. So all the more need for additional revenue streams for roads and bridges. At this time, I'd like to turn it over back to Matt.
Thank you, Brandon. I think we all realize or understand that the highway system in Wayne County is probably the best in this part of the state and one of the better ones in the state. Which you can see from the increased costs, the lack of matching revenue increases, that is in jeopardy going forward. And that's why we're here today to talk about a way to get additional revenue for the roads and the bridges. You can see that our departments have done an excellent job of trying to make the money go as far as possible. We've got less employees, we are doing more and more in-house work that most counties contract out, such as the large concrete culverts that was referenced. Also the paving, we've got our own paving equipment, so our personnel does that as well. Saves a lot of money from what would be the case if we had to contract all of that out. So we have been leaning in our thoughts on this towards the percentage route for the excise tax or surtax. And one of the reasons for that is that it's based upon the current excise tax that is being paid on that vehicle. If you have an older vehicle, if you have a vehicle that's not, was not very expensive at the time, it's going to fall into the minimum rate. And that would be seven dollars and fifty cents a year is all being asked for through this. We can go between two percent and twenty percent, but the minimum is the seven fifty, the maximum that anyone would pay depending on the rates we put in would be three hundred dollars. So that would be the contribution made through the surtax. The wheel tax is a rate up to eighty dollars a vehicle if we would implement that. I need to also point out that you cannot implement one of these things alone. You have to implement them both together. That's a state requirement to make this work. So you can see that we're in desperate need of additional money, even though if we had the wheel tax, got this large pot of money that's distributed by lane miles, we still have issues of funding, but not nearly as bad as would be without having this tax. So if we do not have the wheel tax, we not only do not get the billion and a half in twenty-seven from, or up to more than that, depending upon the lane miles in the state that qualify, we not only would not get that money, we would not get the money that's raised from the tax as well. So it's two fronts that we would not be getting money from. So we're ready to proceed with the hearing. I'll call for those that have signed up. If there's others that wish to speak after that, we'll let you sign the sheet and say what you would like. If you are speaking in opposition to this tax, which is understandable, would you please tell us some of your ideas of how we can find the funding we need to maintain the roads? Or how we could alter our maintenance to be able to maintain the roads with less money? Ron?
Just to clarify for the record, the draft ordinance that was advertised for hearing today was based upon the flat fee amounts for both the surtax and the wheel tax. I understand since then, there's been some collective discussions among council and maybe they want to go a different direction. To accommodate that, we have another public hearing that has been scheduled for August twentieth. And that would be, again, preceded by the legal notice required, including the publication of what I would then expect to be a revised ordinance from that which was advertised for this meeting today. So I think you clarified that, but I think we needed to be sure that we focus on that.
The only way the wheel tax could be adopted today would be if it was a unanimous vote of council. If it's not a unanimous vote, then the second hearing, as Ron referenced, would take place on the twentieth. And on the twentieth, we would have modification to the ordinance at that time, which would reflect our discussion that will happen today following your comments. Okay. So we'll start in. I'll read you the order that, the signup sheet, Ron over.
Thank you, counsel. Is our microphone still not working?
Steve, is that working?
Nope. Okay, cool. I will stand this way. Thank you, counsel. It's an honor and privilege to stand here and speak before you today. This is democracy in action, if you will. As mayor of the city of Richmond, the seat of Wayne County, I share your concern over funding street maintenance. In the past two years, the city has been awarded over six million dollars from the Community Crossings Matching Grant Program. And with required local match, we've invested over twelve point seven million dollars in local street projects. However, our local match has been funded by the Richmond Redevelopment Commission for all roads located in or serving and benefiting a tax increment financing allocation area, with some of the remainder coming from local income tax or motor vehicle highway funds. My point is, there's never been enough MPH to fund regular street department operations and match CCMG. We've always had to dig deeper. Going forward, as we saw on the screen, House enrolled at fourteen sixty-one has made significant changes to the program by both reducing the available dollars and making the grants more competitive. As we saw last year, the state paid out over three hundred and forty-seven million in CCMG. And over the last decade, it varies between one eighty to three hundred and fifty million. These changes will limit the first payout to only a hundred million dollars in the first bucket. And then sits aside, as we saw, twelve million for railroad tracks, fifty million for Indianapolis. And lastly, a new bucket based upon lane miles and population that is available only to counties or municipalities that have adopted a wheel tax. If Richmond adopted the Lohut, it could receive between two hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seven hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars, that it could be used to apply for the new third bucket of the lane mile fund that was taken out of the original fund, which based upon Richmond's two hundred and ninety-six lane miles completed with curbs, storm drains and sidewalks, could make around three hundred thousand dollars available from the last bucket of CCMG. If Richmond adopts the Lohut along with our lower match, then we could have about six hundred thousand dollars from this new third bucket when matched with Lohut. However, if the county adopts the maximum Lohut, the city could receive up to one point four million that could be used to fund street repairs and CCMG match. The difficulty if we do that will be pledging that revenue to bond improvements in our industrial parks without an agreement with the county, something we would have to work through later. Also, due to an early change, and my controller is here, an early change in road and vehicle funding that goes into effect in twenty twenty-six, Richmond has already faced with a one million dollar reduction in the state distribution of auto excise, CVET and FIT from about six point three million down to five point two million, which will significantly impact our ability to fund street repairs in twenty twenty-six ahead of any new Lohut distribution. So we are already feeling the crunch from new laws enacted at the State House this past session. But like any vehicle owner in the city, I don't want to pay any more taxes than I need to. But I do want navigable, well-maintained streets that don't cause damage to my vehicles, just like you. So we must find a balance. We can spend a lot more money on our personal car repairs, a little more money every time you register our vehicles. That's kind of the situation we're in. Some will say that we already paid too much in fuel taxes. The drivers in the room and listening here must understand that the state collects all the fuel taxes and distributes less than half of that back to the counties and cities where the fuel was purchased. There are no fuel stations on state lands. All fuels, and therefore all fuel taxes, are paid through filling stations located within cities and counties like Richmond and Wayne County. However, the state keeps most of those taxes for state highways, interstates. The Indiana State Police, while we compete with them on salaries, public education and even fish and wildlife come out of the fuel taxes the state collects. And then they distribute less than half of that back to the counties and cities where the fuel was originally purchased. But back to today's topic. I am here to support the county's adoption of the maximum amount of Lohut wheel tax for several reasons. Number one, only the counties can collect up to fifty dollars per passenger vehicle registration and up to eighty dollars per. and up to $80 per large trucks based upon having filed your transportation asset management plan with the state. Even though the city has the same TAMP, due to a quirk in the law, cities are not qualified for the extra dollars, only counties do. Is it because you fund bridge repairs? Maybe, I don't know. State legislators haven't been able to answer that question. If the county adopts a maximum amount, this will also help better fund street repairs in the towns throughout the county who cannot adopt their own low hut based upon how the law is written. Towns below 5,000 cannot adopt their own. So does Cambridge City get $700 or $7,000 to fix their streets? If the county adopts a maximum amount, I will not seek any amount from the city. Yes, that would mean forfeiting around $300,000 from the third bucket of CCMG and $218,000 to $762,000 low hut. But we can make do so that the smaller towns, partnered together, can at least get something out of this. And the county collecting up or maintaining all the bridges in the county and even the city. Some people may not know that all the bridges you see in the city, unless they're a state highway, the county maintains those, the city does not. So, but if the county does not adopt the maximum, the city will have to find another way to cover the immediate $1 million shortfall next year alone and future shortfalls. Without the reduction, I'm sorry, with all the reductions in property taxes and future reduction in business taxes, there is no other method to fund street maintenance than the tool the state legislators have enacted for us through low hut. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, Ron. Jeff Plaster.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Jeff Plaster. I'm the Wayne County Commissioner in District 3, and I'm speaking on behalf in favor of the adoption of a low hut. I spent a good many years in your chairs and understand the competing interests that you're trying to weigh right now. I want to thank Mike and Brandon for the presentation that they gave, but also the stellar job that they do in maintaining our roads and bridges, and the same goes for your crew. What do we know about where we're at right now? Brandon and Mike have covered a lot of these points, and I won't belabor them, but I just want to recap a little bit on the challenges that we're facing.
Talk in that direction.
I'll try to talk louder than you, Max. Number one, construction and equipment costs are rising faster than general inflation and much faster than bridge and highway fund revenue that pays for that construction and maintenance. Number two, state legislators, and I'll tell you, I've served on two legislative committees, one for the Commissioners Association, one for the County Association. So I've talked to many state legislators from across the state. They invariably tell me that until counties, cities take advantage of the tools that they have already been given, and the slow hut is one of those tools, that they are not going to generate any additional dollars at the state level to pass down to locals to maintain roads and bridges. They have done a good bit over the last several years, most recently the significant increase in gas tax, but even that has not been enough to keep pace with inflation and construction Number three, over the past few years, the bridge fund balance has declined from a little over $5 million to just a little over $3 million. Those dollars, that $2 million drop has been designed in the 10-year plan. We expected to see that. We're continuing to do everything we can to maintain our roads and bridges without adopting a new tax. We're coming to the end of that opportunity. So, and at the same time, federal and state grant money for bridge projects and road projects does not appear to be growing and doesn't look likely that it will in the foreseeable future. We have, as Brandon said, 230 bridges to maintain, sixth highest in the state. 14 of them are rated in poor condition, and while that doesn't mean they can't be crossed, it does mean that they need attention, as do some of the others. And you also heard that it takes five to six years, even if grant money is available, to get all the pieces in place with engineering and so on to start a project like that. As Mike shared, we have been able to afford very little in new paving for several years. And again, the highway crew has done an outstanding job in doing more with less, but again, that's can't be continued indefinitely. Point four, the state has made changes this year to the Community Crossings Program that will decrease funding for those who do not have a low hut tax in place and will significantly increase funding for governmental units that do have a low hut in place, possibly by as much as $1 to $2 million a year. I've seen some estimates that in some years, that could go even higher, depending on what some of the other pieces are able to do. In particular, can Indianapolis come up with match money for their $50 million? So for Wayne County, if we impose a low hut that collects as little as about $500,000 a year, we would receive 48% of that total, but we would open the door to the opportunity for that lane mile funding stream that we've talked about quite a bit this morning. I know, I've been in that chair, I know this is a difficult decision for council, and I know you're not making it lightly. You're doing your research, you're making sure that you understand the implications. The legislature seems poised to increase the responsibility for county councils. You'll be making decisions on taxation for all of the small towns in the county, as well as for the county itself. I will support whatever decision you all make. We are, in my view, a team of 10. We talk together, we work through issues, we make joint decisions, and whether or not it's the way I would have voted, I'll get behind it 100% and we'll make sure that we make it work as best we possibly can. Having said that, I would encourage you to adopt a low hut now. It can be at the statutory minimum level of 750 per vehicle and still allow us access to the lane mile pot of funding, but whatever level you all deem necessary. You've heard this morning that even at the maximum level, we'll still have a shortfall that we need to deal with, either through engineering or through finding additional resources and reprioritizing. I'm going to turn back the balance of my time. I'm just one of the few times when I have spoken a shorter period of time than Max Smith. That's a feather in my cap. Thank you.
Right down the wall. Okay. Maybe I should add one piece of information I don't think was said during the discussion thus far. We have 1,300, no, yeah, 1,370 lane miles in Wayne County. That is 0.79% of the statewide lane miles that would be calculated into that distribution of pot of money from the Community Crossings. Dwayne Harder?
Hi, I am Dwayne Harder. You want my address?
Yes.
Is that already here?
It's on the sheet.
Okay. All right. It seems like most of the questions that I had or the statements I was going to make has already been addressed. But I do have one question that I would like to ask. If we do not get this new tax, or even if we do, what happens to the current construction that's going on, like in National Road West? There's all kinds of, I'm a delivery driver for Pizza King, and so I make a living on these roads. The construction that's going on, say, in National Road, will that be ended? Are we running out of money so fast that we can't even complete the things that we're doing now?
The construction that's taking place on National Road and on any state highway is state responsibility and state funds. County's not involved in that.
Okay, I picked the wrong example.
That's okay. And a lot of people don't understand the difference, but any road that is a state or federal highway is maintained by the state.
So the state will, we're not going to have work either on our bridges or around town that are currently being done? That's not going to end?
Current projects that the county has are funded to be completed. It's future projects that are in jeopardy. And without additional money at some point, we're probably going to not be able to avoid seeing potholes once in a while, which is not very frequent.
I've learned how to avoid my car. Also, you could very well in the future start seeing bridges that are posted with weight limits, or even some bridges that could be closed because the funds aren't there.
As an example of this problem that we currently have and not, the state not paying 80% of it or funding 80% of the true cost, we have a large bridge that's up for bid in October. That gap that's been created due to the inflation is about $1.2 million. We don't want to scrap that project because that bridge then will start having major problems and will have to be addressed by posting it, by closing it possibly, whatever. So we're very close to being in jeopardy on keeping future projects in place. If we have this wheel tax that we know will be coming, we can shift some money around and probably fund that bridge and continue to go forward. If we don't know that these additional funds will be available, we've got some serious discussion decisions to make on what we're going to do going forward.
Okay.
Did I answer your questions?
More or less. I've probably, I'll think of more questions when I leave and go to work.
Rex Williams.
Mine has been answered.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Brad Winger.
Good morning, Brad Winger. Council, I think you know who I am, and I've spoken to most of you how I feel, but for the general public, I'm county commissioner. I'm not against the wheel tax, I'm against the tax right now. We've heard that we are going to have a shortfalling, we understand that, but there's a lot of things that we don't know. And the short term that I've been in government, the one thing that I'm sure of, we don't rush into decisions. We don't buy paper clips without analyzing it for six months. So, I understand that we're saying that the legislation has forced us. They're not forcing us, they've given us options. This is an option that we have to take. But we have funds at the county to go until next year. All I'm asking is that we take a look at everything. We don't know the full impact of what SB 1 is going to do for us. There's already talking, with my conversations with the legislature, I know that there are going to be tweaks of this legislation next year. They have to. They're getting pressure from all the other 92 counties that they're going to have to tweak some of this. So all I'm asking is, let's delay this. Let's wait until January, February and start these talks again, because we just don't know. And then also, we haven't finished our budget at the county. So we're asking the taxpayers to pay more when we haven't even done our part yet. As a conservative Republican, I think we need to tighten our belt first before we ask the taxpayers to pay more. So that's how I feel. I'm not against it, I'm against it right now. I know in the next several years, there's going to be several more taxes that we're going to have to look at. I don't want to put more of a tax burden on the citizens unless we have to. Our roads are great. Mike and Brandon have done a wonderful job. You drive to any county around us, our roads are better than most of those. We know we're going to have a shortfalling. This is something that Brandon's been talking to us last year about. We have the funds right now, let's wait six months, look at everything, see what the legislation's going to do next year, and then start talking about this. We're all in a tough position, and I think the general public doesn't realize what we do on the government side, we have to look at all our, we're like on board social security. We're on a fixed income. And we have to use that money as wisely as possible because we're not going to have any more in. So we have to use that money very wisely. So before I can support a tax burden on our citizens, I think we need to look at ourselves and see what we can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Richard, and I cannot read your last name on the sheet.
I believe Richard had to go to work.
Oh, sorry. Okay, thank you. Leanne Pardo, did I say that right?
Hello, good morning.
Good morning.
I just found out about this last night, so I'm not really real prepared, but I hate that the state is cutting so much money from our counties and us, but I also remember the money we as taxpayers had to come up with to match grants for the wonderful bicycle path that was forced upon us a few years ago. We could save some money, like our roads, where we live outside of town, where they are tar and gravelled each year, and they're great. We could actually go every other year, because I mean, you guys do a great job on that. Our roads are really better than other counties that have the wheel tax out in the country. So as far as we go, we like to collect cars. So this tax would really affect us. If this new, and I've got a question, is this new tax going to include golf carts, the Amish, and mopeds?
This tax would apply to those vehicles that are registered with the state BMV, so...
But what about golf carts? I mean, are they registered? Well, they need to be registered.
You need to talk to some other group about that.
And if the Amish, I mean, I don't know, do they have, don't they pay something or have a tag or?
The county has an ordinance in place for the Amish to buy a tag for their buggies, and currently that rate is $40 per year. The commissioners have indicated that they will probably be reviewing that ordinance going forward and maybe change that, but yes, the Amish have...
Well, you know, there's, I love them, but they're still wheels. I mean, they do kind of...
They're used to roads, that's right.
...out there. Okay. And I mean, since we've already had a lot of tax money coming from the state so far, you know, there, we still have some kind of the worst roads in Richmond, I hate to say it. I mean, everywhere you go, they're working on a road, almost at the expense of a lot of businesses. It's put them out, especially downtown Richmond. If you want to tax us, I think it would be good to be more, and yours is even maybe less than what you were saying of $7, but $15 to $20, but $7,000, that would be great for cars and trucks, it's going to be less, but whatever tax you impose, it needs to all stay, I think, in Wayne County. I don't think it needs to go to Indianapolis and then try to distribute such a little tiny, minute amount that we're going to get. We need to keep all that money here, right here. And if you have large companies with multiple vehicles, this could financially really hurt and threaten their business. Some people can barely afford one vehicle and pay the taxes and titles and all that every year on them. I know we need decent roads, but maybe there's a few things that we could cut, because we all know there's a lot of waste and most government spending. So, thank you so much, and I appreciate all that you guys do and all the city workers and the street workers do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. In relation to your comment about the bike paths, all of those are basically within Richmond, so you may want to talk to the mayor about that.
He wasn't the mayor then, though.
I agree. The trail that runs between Richmond and all the way to Marion, that's funded with other dollars that come from multiple sources, that's not Wayne County dollars. You raised the question about the money getting back to Wayne County. In the case of this low hut tax... In the case of this Lohut tax, Bureau of Motor Vehicles collect that, they charge a small fee to do that per registration, the rest of the money is sent straight to the county and put into our highway fund. So, it's not going to the state, the state decide when and how to send it back to us. That comes from the Bureau of Motor Vehicles to the county. The Attorney's Office will be responsible to get that in the proper fund for roads and bridges. Bradley Wood.
Hi, Bradley Wood. I live out in Greens Fork, Indiana, and, and I noticed that they had to have their road redone because of a poor workmanship the previous year. So, I don't know who did that, whether or not that was the county, or whether or not that was subcontracted out.
Within towns or county, doesn't matter which, if it's a state highway, the state's responsible. So that, your question about thirty-eight through Greens Fork?
Yeah.
That was a state function, responsibility, and yes, they did have to redo that due to the quality of Richmond.
Okay, thank you. So Wayne County should not be strong-armed into taxing our residents just to qualify for state funding that we've already helped pay into. We are already facing financial pressures, property taxes have gone up this year, not because of rate increases, but because the county's twenty-twenty-five reassessment raised property values by an average of fifteen percent. That means even though that state rate stayed the same, residents will owe more simply because the value of their home or land went up. On top of that, the state is pressuring counties like ours to adopt the wheel and excise surtax using grant money as leverage. That's not collaboration, that's coercion. And, also, I feel like that, especially since this meeting was at eight AM on the first day of school for many families, there's limited participation, so I agree with many others that it should not be decided today and be pushed on to another, to be able to get additional public perspective. And then, I know that the mayor had mentioned that, that he's not looking for Richmond to double tax, but there is that mechanism for the city of Richmond to implement their own wheel, wheel or excise tax as, as well. We're not against safe roads or responsible infrastructure spending, but we are against being rushed or bullied into another tax burden, especially in a year when families are already being squeezed by our property taxes and the increased cost of living. Wayne County must use this as an opportunity to stand firm and send a message to the state, because if we're bullied now, what keeps us from being bullied later, for additional taxes? And, let's see. The other thing is, is I feel like farmers will be targeted by this with all of the trucks and trailers and vehicles that they have, so just wanted to share those perspectives. Thank you.
Thank you, Bradley. Is there anyone in the motion to speak that did not get signed up? Yes, you come forward. Would you give us your name and address, please?
My name is Mary Chaney. I have lived and worked in Wayne County all of my life, and I am opposed to your tax. We have determined that you can do a lower rate than the fifty dollars. Fifty dollars may not seem like a lot to any of you. I'm retired, I live on social security. Prices are going up everywhere for me. Fifty dollars means a lot. I want to go on to say that I did a little research, and according to my research, Wayne County has approximately sixty-six thousand residents as of twenty-twenty-four. And of that, twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-two are older or senior. Also, the median income for Wayne County, fifty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty-six Living on social security, I am nowhere near that many. So this hurts me worse than it hurts you. Everything is increasing, like I said, not only this, property taxes, insurance, everything, let alone tariffs. Who knows where I'm gonna be? I want decent roads and bridges also. I am opposed to being blackmailed. I am opposed to paying this, and the state of Indiana takes the bulk and gives Wayne County a little bit here. Also did some research, and Wayne County as of twenty-twenty-four had sixty-six thousand three hundred and seventy-seven registered vehicles. And if you're going to charge fifty dollars per vehicle, how much is that? Anybody know? Anybody have any idea how much that will come up to?
Half the figure you got, resident vehicles. Just take half of it.
I think he's doing his calculator.
Let's say sixty-six thousand vehicles, fifty, fifty dollars a vehicle?
Fifty dollars a vehicle, sixty, let's just do sixty-six thousand.
Okay. Three million, three hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Let's be clear on that, though. If we go the percentage route, it's not fifty dollars a vehicle.
Okay.
And the older the vehicle, and the cheaper the vehicle at the time of purchase, the less the rate. Majority, or a major part of the vehicles would fall into seven-fifty to like fifteen to twenty dollar range. There would not be that many vehicles in, that would reach the maximum amount.
Well, that's good to know, but there's still more money coming in Wayne County is providing than Wayne County is gonna get.
That's right.
We're paying lane, lane miles in Indianapolis.
Significant part of the gas tax money that's raised goes to the state.
That's right.
Which goes to roads all over the state of Indiana. That's right.
Exactly. My thing is, you're hurting the seniors in this county by continuing tax, tax, tax. When I can no longer afford to maintain and do repairs of my home, what is my home gonna look like? Why does Wayne County look the way that it looks? Because people can't afford it. The more money you raise to do these roads, the more the contractors will raise the price of fixing our roads. They know that. They're getting a raise too. I'm opposed to it. I'm tired of being taxed, taxed, taxed. And the only thing I can do is vote. I'll watch what you do, I will vote. I watch what Indianapolis does, I will vote. That's all I can do, but I'm tired of being taxed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, Mary, what town do you live in Richmond, or where do you live?
I'm sorry?
What town do you live in, or where do you live?
I'm out, just Rose Hamilton addition.
Okay.
So, Richmond, but centerville.
It was enough, yes.
Name's Larry Bennett, out of Richmond.
Larry what?
Bennett.
Thank you.
So on a small business like me, we already get hit with personal property tax. Now you're wanting us to pay more. We have several trucks, several trailers, that would get, you know, the, I agree with senior citizens getting hit, but when you're running on the business side, it's not just twenty-one dollars for the average person that may own one or two vehicles. And in the percentage bracket, I can't go buy a fifteen thousand dollar truck anymore with the ways inflation is. We just had to replace one, and it was almost seventy thousand dollars. So on that, you're wanting to put a two percent on that one, which will be over the twenty-one dollar limit, according to the chart. I know we have to find ways to move money around and get our roads where they need to be, which a lot of them are great. You know? But there's gotta be another way, instead of getting strung armed by the higher-ups for our county. The money needs to stay in Wayne County, because we're not going into Ohio for the thousands of people that drive on our roads to work in Wayne County. We're taxing the people in Wayne County that work in Wayne County. And to put another tax on us, I just feel at this time is not right. And, and like he said, we, we need to move this out farther, do more research, so we can hear what's, what's better for Wayne County, and there may be more options out there than taxing us at twenty to fifty dollars. If you were able to just tax everybody at five dollars a vehicle, you would still get half a million to a million dollars of revenue coming in. And like the charts say, no matter if you're on the low side or the high side of this, Wayne County's still in a shortfall. So it doesn't necessarily matter how much you tax us, you're still gonna be, not have enough money to do what Wayne County needs to do, unless you go with an even higher percentage, and nobody wants that. Families can't even afford to go get groceries. And here we are, we want to tax the citizens more for this. And I understand it opens up down the road, the highway, the county miles, to get more grants, but still, you either have to, and you don't get this grant money, and if you don't, then you don't get the grant money down the road. So, it's not only us getting strung armed, it's you guys in the council, in the government that's getting strung armed. It's above my pay grade. But, I mean, it seems like every year, there's either a new tax on the citizens or on the businesses. And if we just keep taxing everybody, small businesses won't be around here. Because if you can't afford to pay the taxes now, and we keep adding more taxes, five years from now, we could be in the same spot, and we'll need thirty percent more tax than what we are today. We don't know what the future holds. If we don't make that decision today, see if the law tweaks a little bit to help counties like us, cause there's, like you said, there's fifty-five out of ninety-two counties that have it in Indiana. So why aren't the other counties already doing it? The last county that did it was Randolph in two thousand six, two thousand eight. So why hasn't any other county adopted this in that timeframe?
I think the Randolph County date was just in reference to them. I'm not sure what, when the counties and the state implemented their tax. I'm sure there's probably some that are around that or like later. I understand your concerns, your feelings. We're just all reacting to those that's a higher pay level, as you say, that are requiring and making changes. I think there's one thing we can count on from the state, that for the past several years, they have been very strong in that they want local governments to utilize the revenue tools that they have provided. I'm so proud of the fact that Wayne County, to this point, has been able to not have to do that to get by. We have not implemented an income tax in many years. In fact, the last time an income tax was implemented here, it was to pay the bonds for the jail. When that was, project was paid off, there was some extra money left in that that did go to the highway and bridges, but that was one time. So, we in Wayne County have not been exposed to additional income taxes like the state wanted, and we have not had the wheel tax imposed like the state wanted. As they tweak things, I'm sure one of the things that they will not tweak is the requirement to use these revenue sources that they put out there. Time will tell, but based upon what their philosophy has been for many, many years, they're gonna continue that philosophy of we've given you the opportunity to raise funds, you have chosen not to do it, don't complain to us, that's what we get told routinely.
Now, do they have a set date that if you don't have this in effect by, then you don't get?
If we don't have this in effect by September first of this year, we cannot raise funds in twenty-six. As far as the third pot of money, if we implement this next year prior to September the first, we would qualify for that first distribution out of that third pot of money.
So then, couldn't we push it off? As the commissioner said, they haven't even got their budget in line yet, but still, you want to impose a tax on us before we even know?
Well, we have not approved budgets yet. However, budgets that we, the budget that we will approve of things will be very similar to what we've had in the past. We have limited revenue, we have functions that have been made, we're going, we're making cuts in the twenty-six budgets, and we're gonna be discussing more of that yet today, and for the next couple of months prior to adopting the budget. But we got a pretty good idea of where the budget will be, and there's not wiggle room within our budget to come up with significant amounts of money for any major project, including roads and bridges.
I mean, I'm, I'm in favor, but I'm also opposed.
I understand.
To where, if, if we know we might not have it this year, can we wait? Cause we can still get it in twenty-twenty-six.
We can wait, yes.
I think it would help a lot of citizens wait out, do more investigating, more knowledge to come out than to do it today or within the next couple of weeks, and wait and see what happens in the next six months, and revisit it, and possibly have more information, and people be more knowledgeable on this in six months, and know that we can still get that grant money instead of today. That's all I'm asking.
Can I, can we clarify? Cause I know it's confusing, I'm still confused for everybody, but I, I just, I want to make sure that the people in this room and watching understand, the grant portion of that does not require a wheel tax to be passed.
The large pool...
The land miles do.
The land, yes.
But the grant portion is not.
And however, those funds in that are very reduced from past years, and because of that reduction and other things, the competition is gonna be just as greater and greater to divvy up that smaller pot of money. So, we can get, possibly can get some of that money, but it's not gonna be a significant amount.
But to answer your question, we don't know that, that's our assumption at this point, cause we don't know how many people are gonna apply, we don't have any, I mean, so you're right, there is still a lot of unknowns.
Some of these unknowns will be unknowns for a long time, because it'll depend on what counties or cities implement the wheel tax and that kind of thing.
I'm sorry, I meant more land miles than grant money.
I just wanted to make sure, cause I, it is, listen, I'm still confused too, so, it's all, just making sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One, one thing, most people don't realize, most people don't realize, unless you're a farmer or in business, your personal property tax has been reduced quite a bit the last several years. Last year was eighty, up to eighty thousand dollars was exempt. Now, I think what is it, a million dollars?
You're talking about the personal property tax?
That's county money, which don't go to the highway other than pay, help pay insurance for employees.
There's no property tax money goes to the highway, it's option tax money that the county raises that's used for supplement the highway.
But, that also, that's a shortfall we've had.
Yes.
Increasing every year for the last several years.
Yes.
As far as taxpayer goes. And unless you're a farmer, like I say, unless you're a farmer or a businessman, you don't realize that. And unless you're a farmer, like I say, unless you're a farmer or a businessman, you don't realize that.
Personal property tax remains the same as the exemption for payable '26, but going forward after that, it rises to 2 million. And if the acquisition cost of personal property is less than $2 million, you do not have to even file and you don't owe any funds. That's starting effective paid '27. Home state exemptions and all those kinda exemptions on homes continue to increase. The circuit breaker, the caps on home has continued to increase so that there's less and less money collected as more homes reach that cap of 1%. So that, all those things enter into the taxes we all have to pay and the taxes some of us don't receive as entities.
Max, can I speak to our budget, please?
Yes.
So over the last, I've been in office now six years and over the last six years, we have cut our budget back every year. Cut back in people's, in all the departments' budgets. And this year, there's no fat left to cut out. So things we're gonna cut are people getting more training to do their jobs right. We may have to cut employees. So I'm just saying that we don't have a bunch of extra money just floating around here that we just spend frivolously because none of us believe in doing that. And we had, the only thing in six years that we have done is when the jail bond went off, we actually cut the tax down to 1.25, that used to be 1.5 that comes out of everyone's paycheck. So this is hard for us and I'm not speaking for it, but I'm just saying it's not, it's not an easy decision.
If there are no further comments, yes. Your name, please?
Larry Hetchison.
And where do you live?
Outside of Richmond.
Okay.
So in essence, what you people are saying is that this governor is holding every person in the state hostage and they are gonna continue to drain my billfold and your billfolds of money. The mayor here wants the food and beverage tax. And what's gonna be the next tax that's gonna come up? This governor, Republican, voted himself a $60,000 raise before he ever took office. Cause he thinks he's worth it, but he's turned around now and saying, we're gonna tax everybody and we're gonna spend the money and anytime. And I agree with the other guy. The more money we give you out of our billfold, the more people are gonna continue to raise their prices. Whether it's contractors, whether it's heating people, they know that we are being taxed to death. I'm retired and I'm sick and tired of whether it's the Don Con on the East Coast taxing us and he's getting richer and we're getting poor as this continues to go. I oppose any tax that you people wanna do, whether it's the food and beverage, whatever it is. Learn to live within your means, that's what we have to do. And if you keep doing this, we're not gonna be here. We're gonna be living in a tent, then what are you gonna tax?
Thank you.
Oppose any tax that that governor or that dude on the East Coast is coming up with.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So vote.
Have a second?
Second.
Then move in second that we close the public hearing. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed. So we will continue then to discuss how we wanna proceed today on this subject. Remind that if we were to impose, approve this ordinance and impose the tax today, it would take a unanimous vote to do that. And I don't believe that that's gonna be the case by any means. So we need to probably have a motion to approve the ordinance so that we can vote and proceed on planning for another hearing and discuss this as how we wanna modify the ordinance.
Yes, I just have a motion before somebody makes a motion. So Ron, just to make sure I understand, what was advertised was at the maximum rate?
Yes.
If anything changes.
And what was advertised was not the percent for the surtax, but.
So does it have to be re-advertised before our 20th meeting?
We already have.
Even though, but we as a body haven't even agreed. This is the first time some of this information's come to us.
Go forward, I would.
It was, no, no, you're right, but there wasn't an agreement on what we're, what we're gonna look at charging.
And that's why I think, I anticipated multiple meetings. And I'm not even sure that one more will do it on the 20th. I think I'm suggesting to Max that we also advertise a meeting for the 25th based upon whatever culminates from your discussions today. I've heard that you definitely are leaning toward a percentage approach to the certain, to the local surtax. That was not what was in the originally advertised ordinance. And that's what's, that's what's before you, the originally advertised ordinance. So I agree with Max, I think the chances of that one unanimous is fine or nil. But let's go ahead and make the record on that. And then you can open up for discussion as to what you'd like to see in the next ordinance to come forward.
So what will be voted on today is the ordinance that was advertising at the maximum rate?
Exactly, not only that, we have to publish the ordinance itself as part of the legal notice. So that was what was published because that was, that was the starting point, I guess.
Thank you.
So then if it's not a unanimous vote today, then we have the next public hearing at workshop on the 20th.
Correct.
Correct.
20th.
Which is in the evening, which.
At 6:00 PM. So that was mentioned. The reason we had this today instead of an evening meeting is because of the timeframe that we're working in.
If you want it to be collectible in '26, I mean, obviously you have your backs against the wall from the timeframe going down.
But a yes vote today would be for what was advertised.
That's correct.
It wouldn't be passing the tax just for the advertised ordinance.
If all seven of you said yes and voted yes, you would have adopted the wheel tax ordinance as advertised, which would include both the surtax at the maximum rate, because we do have approved plans that Purdue has approved, which would be $50 and then the wheel tax at the maximum rate, which would be $80.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second? So that we can discuss this and vote? We need to turn it down if we don't wanna do it.
Well, I'll second the motion just to get the vote. But I am not voting for what's advertised.
Then move to second, any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
So obviously we're not proceeding with as advertised.
Can we, did I?
Yes.
Did I hear seven nays?
For the ordinance answer.
Okay, I just, she needs to be able to have a vote.
Sorry. Okay, so we're now open to discussion of how we would like to proceed.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Well, I can tell you right now that the district in which I represent, which is mostly of Wayne Township, I feel there should be further discussion on this, especially with our partners. I see that Mr. Engel is here from Richmond City Council. As representing District 1, I feel that I cannot put those constituents that live in my district in a possible double taxation position, so I'll be voting no today.
Max, can I ask for Bobby, who made the motion?
Mary made it.
Okay. And then?
I second him.
Thank you.
Okay, other discussion? So what, if we wanna pursue this, we need to talk about our options on funding level and type?
Well, I guess from my perspective, I'm not even in agreement with us even talking about going to the next step because of the fact, similar to what Brad said, tomorrow night, we have a meeting with all of the Wayne County elected taxing units that the chamber is sponsoring for us to talk about the impact as we, on the total taxation issues facing us in a couple of years. So this needs to be a part of that overall conversation and the impact. So any, it's gonna be difficult for me to offer up a solution on a percentage or a number, but I won't even be voting for it at this particular time. I prefer for us to get all of the information that we need and then make a decision next, early next year. My only comment, Max, would just be to remind everyone that it's not us that set that deadline. It was the legislators that did it. And everybody in this room needs to send those people a letter and say, we are opposed to what you're doing. So, so that they hear it not only from us, but from you, because that's what makes a difference. We can say things all day, but when the rest of you send a letter or call or an email, they pay attention, so please do.
Where are we supposed to send that to?
You can send it to the legislators, Jeff Brots, Senator Jeff Brots, Representative Brad Barrett. And go to the state website, it gives you an email to send information, letters, whatever to them. And I do know both of those gentlemen and they're glad to hear from people because they're trying to vote for things the way they think, the same that all seven of us are. We think, we're trying to vote to what you all want, but take care of what we're here to do, not just, you know, oh, I think we could do this.
I'm Rick Pardo, Clay Township. I know you've seen the name on records and stuff around the town.
Do you mind coming up here if we can?
Okay.
Yeah, our public hearing's over.
Yeah, public hearing's over.
Public hearing's over. Anyways.
We can't take any more public comments.
My cousin.
Take a very brief time.
Make it quick, Rick.
My cousin who does a lot of cleanups on highways from the wreck and stuff that owns the toy business, I talked to him last night, I thought he'd know something about it. I don't know why nobody didn't know about this tax. You know, it seems like it was a surprise to everybody.
It's been discussed at previous meetings that we were having this. It's been, there's been legal advertisements saying that the hearing was today. Also included was the copy of the ordinance. The fact that somebody has not heard about this. We have done everything that should have been done to make that known. There's been article in the paper as well.
But my only other suggestion is get the mics fixed so we can hear you say.
We're sorry.
We're sorry about that.
Yep.
There has been massive amount of work done on this room over the last couple of years, which included the sound system. They will be working on it and we're not happy about that either.
You know, I think it was important to move this to the next step. And an evening public hearing and obviously with today's discussion, the requirement of live streaming, taxpayers becoming more aware. I'm disappointed that we only have the city of Richmond represented here today, that any of the other small towns incorporated areas that would have benefited from revenue from the low hut, I've not heard from. And they're not here to speak as to either for or against. I think the meeting tomorrow night with the chambers holding with, for elected officials around the county will give us an opportunity to maybe engage some of those folks. And then moving towards the 20th, having more citizens between now and then contact the seven of us or appear at that meeting to provide us more information. I think the important thing to understand is it's not the only tax that's gonna come before this body in the next few months that we're gonna be responsible for making a decision in that we don't even control. It's not counting revenue, it's not counting budget, but the seven of us are charged with making a decision if those taxing entities can move forward with plans or projects that they need tax money for. So I think it's important that this decision is not taken lightly. I don't support the 100%. I'm not saying that I don't support the percentage at this point. I think there's more to learn in the coming weeks. And if we, if we're able to make that decision yet this year, we make that decision, if it waits until next year, I don't believe that it's the end of the world for us if that is delayed. So I encourage more dialogue.
Max, one point I would make clear, the revised ordinance, which I think you seen, put in the excise on a percentage basis, but that was at the 20% max. I did consult with the lady at the BMV who's kind of overseeing this. To the gentleman's point, there's a lot of wheel tax talk going on around the state right now. Not just Wayne County, not just Franklin County, you know, a lot. But we do not have to start the advertising process over if you lower the final adopted rate from that which was advertised. You would not be able to increase it without starting the advertising cycle over. So the meeting for the 20th is advertising the same flat rate, I think, on the wheel tax, but the max 20% for the surtax, that could be lowered, either of those could be lowered on the 20th. And if you were able to get a unanimous vote on the lower revised ordinance, it could become effective at that time, subject to the M V and all the documents of the BMV before September 1.
You know, some of the concerns we've heard here today also is classing cars, businesses with multiple licensed trailers or trucks. Through the training that LTAP offered, they also provided the latitude to have a schedule of charges based on classification of cars. So my example we're on would be classing cars, if it's a 2%. Within that, that schedule, could it be a lesser percentage for special class vehicles?
Not less than two.
Okay, so let's say we do three, could there be a 2% on certain class?
Whatever the number, percentage wise, you have a minimum of $7.50, I think, per registration.
Thank you.
Well, I talked to a few of the town council members and they're kinda like us. Their revenue is so small, they know what they're gonna do in the future. In fact, one said, maybe we just ban this town and tell the state to take it over. And it won't happen to be the county that's taking over. But still, what we do here is gonna benefit, whatever we do, as far as adopting the wheel tax, is going to help the small communities. Maybe Richmond wouldn't get what they want, but Richmond has other revenue they can use. Cedarville, Hagerstown, Water Suits, they could use some of that revenue on their streets too. That's what they've told us. So important to help the small communities, I feel like so. Whatever we do, whatever percentage we do, we're gonna help them out. Whether we do it this year or next year, they're a part of the small community.
Max, can I add one thing? We did, we as council did get several emails from individuals about this. We've all read those, looked at those, you know, paid attention. We got a letter from Tony Foster, also from our P and L, but Tony Foster. So we are listening, you know, to all of that. It's just we're put in a hard spot and we're trying to do the best for everyone, just like the gentleman, you know. like the gentleman, you know, I don't know if you got the lawn mowing company, but your shirt says that, so I understand all that, but, but we also pay taxes, and we live here and we go on those roads. So, my fear is, like the lady said, "I can't afford $50." That's, I'm sure that's true, but what we don't want is then we close a bridge and she has to drive three miles around to get to her doctor every time she goes. So, that, you know, we're kind of trying hard to weigh those things out, and we don't wanna put her, you know, in the, the food pantry line, but we've got to take care of these things also, so it's finding that happy medium for that, for those things.
Also, just for clarification, Tony Foster reached out to us as a citizen in Wayne County, not as a representative of RPNL.
Thank you. Sorry.
But yeah. He is allowed to do that.
He does give his rights to citizenship, that's right.
But, but the $50 fee didn't get a lot of attention as far as come in today. They're not so much against wheel tax. A lot of them say you're gonna have to do it, but I just hope you don't do it at the $50 rate. You go to a percentage, you know? Some discussion, you know, we, we talked, different ones of us talked about percentage, and so that's gonna be the way I would look at it as a percentage instead of a flat rate.
The percent does not apply to the wheel tax, just to the local excise surtax?
Yes. It's a flat rate per vehicle on the wheel tax for trucks.
Because of the whole different classes of vehicles, you're not paying them both anyhow.
Right. Right. And just in case you may not be aware, the majority of the funds that would be collected through the low hut are from the surtax side compared to the wheel tax. There's a significant difference there. There's just not as many vehicles that fit in that wheel tax category as in the surtax. So, do we wanna end discussion on this at this point and continue later?
I think we need to end the discussion at this point. Make the motion until we have the meeting tomorrow night and we have an opportunity to have further discussion of it.
So, we've got a motion to end the discussion on this today, which would, in fact, I assume...
If you make the motion to end it today?
Discussion.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved in second that we table the discussion on this to future meeting. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's the case. So, I wanna thank everyone that's still here that came for this hearing. Please tell your friends what you've learned today, whether it's plus or minus for this, but people need to know and need to be involved. So, we will be continuing this discussion on the 20th, 6:00 P.M. here in this room.
Max?
Yes.
As I suggested, can you at least target a date subsequent to the 20th?
If we need another hearing...
For yet another?
Yeah.
Meeting?
Yeah, to advertise.
We need to advertise.
It's been recommended that we schedule a third hearing if necessary on the 25th, which is a Monday evening. Need a motion for that?
I don't need a motion. I just wanna make sure that we do it. We don't just have three people show up.
Yeah. Sounds like evening meeting? Yes.
Evening meeting.
Six.
Okay, we'll schedule that. If we don't need it, decide we don't want it, later we can cancel it.
Give the box on the 25th.
5th, Monday, the 25th.
Mr. President, can we take about a five minute break?
We'll take a short break here, then we'll proceed with the rest of the agenda for this council meeting. We've got a few items to talk about as a personnel committee as a whole, and then several items on the finance committee as a whole, and we have another scheduled appointment with State Board of Accounts at 11:30. So, the more you say about that, the more we're gonna have. 11:30.
Business before the commissioners come with their reports. Each year, the state says that at our first meeting in August, we need to consider the property, estimated property tax levy limits for all the other entities in the county. Historically, for many years, we have taken the approach not to get into that and leave that up to between the state board, or DLGF and the entities. The, all of those limits were made available to us, but historically, like I say, we have not dug into that. We've left that up to the communities, the taxing units to work with the state on any of these issues. In the past several years, we've had a motion that council make no binding recommendations to those units and let the DLGF deal with those entities. It'd be my request that we approve that motion in our minutes to satisfy the requirements of the state and let the taxing units deal with the state on their limits.
I like the motion that we do, Doc. Make a recommendation on the taxing of other entities in Wayne County. That's their budget. They should work with that budget with the state.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second that we make no recommendations, but refer that back to the units and the state. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you.
No, I think part of that needs to be understood in that the auditor is directed to provide copies of the minutes of this meeting. I think he could do, I, I will work with, with them to do excerpts just to cover this aspect of it, and then provide those to all the taxing units.
Okay.
And these are the non-binding taxing units?
Right.
Clarify that.
Thank you.
They're all, you know, anything you've ever done has always been a recommendation. It hasn't been binding since Tony was there.
Yeah, several years. Okay. Mr. Hickam, Bob.
Your project list before you, probably one project that's not on there that should be is the sound system.
It will be this afternoon.
Mr. Doyinger has assured me we will discuss this this afternoon. So, looking at your sheet, nothing new on the parking or the maintenance building security fence, although we did get our quote in for the west parking lot lights and outlet. Remember what this project will do. Take the underground wiring that we've had issues with over the years and put it overhead. We'll be having a new meter feed from the southwest corner of that lot. This is the WellCare West Lot. And then on the southeast corner will be the plug-ins for the coroner's vehicles so that he no longer has to plug in on the other side by the courthouse where courthouse security comes in. This will also then replace the lights to buy LED, which should lower the power consumption. Courthouse front entrance continues to work. They do have the temporary ADA ramp in so that they can reconfigure the permanent one that's on the south end. They've removed all those bricks, and so that side of the street is close to coming to an end, if you will, and they'll start on the other side of the street. Nothing new on the proxy car lock system, the courthouse elevator. We did have a pre-bid meeting last week. We had some encouraging attendance to that, better than we had the first time that we put this out for bid, so that was looking a little bit more optimistic with a little more interest.
There's the interest, the interest in all of the areas.
Yes. Yes. And then the commissioners will open those bids on August 13th, and then we've got some preliminary numbers for the security entrance on the west side of the courthouse, and we hope to be able to share those with you at Workshop. And then down at the lower right-hand corner highlighted is your council one-time balance less the vehicles that you committed for the purchase of the sheriff's department. I understand from Bobby that they did get that claim yesterday, so that will actually be coming off your balance that showed, that is shown there above 2.5, so. Any questions?
I have one question. So, on the Fairgrounds Parking Lot, is it our intent to try to get that done before the next, is it the chamber dinner that's the big one we have it?
Yeah. Well, this year, the intent is to gravel it so that it has a year to settle and then pay it next year, but yes, that is the intent to have it done. Yeah.
So, when is that, when's that, it gonna be done?
We're shooting for October.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Steve. Mr. Plast.
I have no further comments unless you have questions.
Any questions for Jeff?
No, but I do wanna thank him. I, I don't know how many people will show up tomorrow night, but I really appreciate you and the chamber making that happen.
Yeah. Last time I checked, there were about 65 registered. Cross section, a lot of township people. Interesting. Is there any additional business to come before, maybe this morning, before we move to personnel? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So vote.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.